Individuals who are to speak, please come to the podium, state your name for the record. You'll be given three minutes.
Hi Karen Ayford, I live in the Knowles and I wanted to bring up the streets and the Knowles again. There's still nothing being done, but quite often the men from the, it's called Public Works, are driving their trucks throughout our neighborhood daily. And so I know that they're aware of it because they have to bounce around just like everybody else has to bounce around. But also I was wondering about the stop sign at the at the southwest corner of Third and Mount Edwards Street. There's these huge lilac bushes that are grown there. And they like are completely, almost completely blocking the stop sign that's there. And so I didn't want to harass people that had just moved in there. I didn't know if that was because it's right at the stop sign, if that was something that Public Works takes care of to trim or if it's the homeowner. But it's getting pretty dangerous. I've saw a lot of people run the stop sign. I saw a lady almost hit a little boy today. So I thought I should come tonight and point it out, but it's at that southwest corner of Mount Edwards and Third Street. And so I just want to bring that to your attention because I don't want to see any kids get hurt. So just going to bring up the roads again on the Knowles. We sure like to have some love. I've been here for 14 years now and we've never had any road work at all done in the Knowles. And so I think it's high time that we get around to that other neighborhood too, because neighborhoods that are a lot newer than ours have already had road work done. And we're supposed to be going around town to different neighborhoods and processing over the years. But I've been here 14 years and it doesn't take 14 years to go through an entire town this small. And we still have not had anything done on our roads in the Knowles. So, thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to item B two. So proclamation for this week is a celebration of the public works professionals that support our town. Whereas public work professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities and services that are vital importance are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, quality of life and wellbeing of the residents of the town of Wellington. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities and services could not be provided to our community without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers and employees and who are responsible for maintenance, improvement and protection of our town's transportation, water supply, water treatment systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential to our citizens. And whereas the year 2023 marks the 63rd annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. And whereas the town is extremely proud of our talented, highly skilled staff and officially recognizes and appreciates and supports them in their professional growth. Now therefore, I, Kaylor Shosse, Mayor of the town of Wellington, Colorado, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st, 20, oh, 21st through 27th of 2023 as Public Works Week and urge all of our citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association in celebration of the public works professionals and their contributions to protecting the health, safety and quality of life of our community.
Good job. Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda, we will proceed to presentations evening to Ms. Kelly Hodling, the town deputy administrator represent the town grants updates and the current plan for the town's website redesign and accessibility. Ms. Hodling.
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Trustees, Kelly Hodling, Deputy Town Administrator. As mentioned before you tonight is an update on the status of our, the towns grants that we have underway. So I'll be looking at page seven in your packet and it looks like this. So what's most important about grant management is completing the grants you currently have at hand. So out of the 17 grants that we have been awarded, we've completed about half of them and we have nine projects that are in progress or starting soon. And that represents out of that $7.3 million, we have $5 million of funding that we'll be working through over the next couple of years. So with that, I'll talk about a couple of them for the public about what's underway and starting soon. So the most notable one that represents a very large portion of the awarded projects is the downtown improvements. So that is that goes to the bull bouts, the crosswalks, nuisance drainage and ADA improvements in our old town area. Right now that we have to work very closely with C dot since it's, it's their road. And so our team is working very diligently about what can be done. Because if anytime you're working on drainage, you have to determine where the drainage will go and you don't want to cause another nuisance downstream, if you will. So before they can really get into like the, like the pretty design of it, there's a lot of other things that have to be done for them. So they'll be working on that. And then things that will be starting soon is we were awarded funding to do a demonstration guarding at the municipal services building through northern water. And so our, we're gonna, to save some money with that grant project, we'll be doing that in-house with our parks department. So the first step will be kind of clearing some of that mulch and then we have purchased or will be purchasing soon those plants. And we'll be working through that this summer and then hopefully we'll have some display signs about, you know, some of those low intensive water plants that people might want to put in their garden. So that will be upcoming. We also were awarded money through AARP to do some Adirondacks chairs and maybe an umbrella outside of the Lieber Center here. So we'll get working on that. And then most notably is the viewpoint lift station that was through congressionally direct spending and that had to pass the, both the House and the Senate. And so that was an, that's a very key project for us. And if the public isn't familiar with what a lift station is, a lift station helps pump wastewater from lower elevations to higher elevations. So we can transport it to our treatment facility. So that is over, over half a million dollars. I think it's $600,000. And that helps our rate payers because that's directly correlated with our wastewater fund. So it's very difficult to find funding when you have grants or projects that are already underway because you have to start from the very beginning. And so what we've tried to do is look at our capital improvement plan and find projects that haven't started yet. And so that one was a key one for our rate payers that I wanted to note. And then submitted, I, we do have this hybrid relationship with Main Street. So I did want to mention that our staff in Caitlin's position, the community and business liaison. And they did submit a grant for the community event fund through the Bohemian Foundation and that will help them market the Main Street markets. And if awarded, that runs through Main Street. So I know it can be a little bit confusing, but that does help our businesses and entrepreneurs in our community and helping them to grow. Submitting soon, if we receive Board of Trustees approval is an AMI network system, which is advanced metering infrastructure. And so this would have to come to the board for approval. Should we want to do something along those lines? And you would find out more about that at that point. And then we have a list of potential grants. There's a variety of things on there and I'll be honest, the list is much longer. So I have a very long, dirty staff list, if you will, with lots, lots of potential grants, but to try to clean it up. I just highlighted a couple of those that we have talked about before. And, and there's some new things that have come about that haven't been mentioned in here or publicly quite yet. Is the senior ride program, Ms. Garcia and I met with our senior group and they had mentioned that they were looking for funding because they received a little bit less funding than before. AARP might be another avenue that we could reach out to that might have grant funding. And so I'm already kind of looking at their website to see what might be potential. But we just, March was that last round of funding for this year. So it's a little too late, but maybe something for next year and I'll keep my eyes peeled of what might be available. And then a fishing dock has been mentioned that we would like, as we just had the kids to park stay with the fishing derby. So there might be some funding through that, through the state. And then our post board, which is the Parks Rec Open Space Trails Advisory Board. They've also mentioned a Veterans Memorial Plaza. And so they're trying to, they might be doing some fundraising on their own. You'll notice there's nothing in the budget for either, for that Veterans Memorial Plaza. So I'll, I'll keep looking if there's some grants available for that while also trying to support our staff will be through the, maybe if they're doing fundraising efforts. So of course, the Board of Trustees will be involved. So I did want to mention those things. And then I do want to mention our projects that have not been awarded. So there, there is a theme here that I would like some Board of Trustee direction is that we have applied for three different times, the Parks and Trail Master Plan Grant. I did have a call with the state of Colorado about our most recent application. Out of a score of 100, we scored a 70 and the awarded application scored in the eighties. So we were very close. They said we had the strongest letters of, letters of support, the tightest budget, the most readiness to go. But what they did say is that because this was through the Office of Economic Development and International Trade, they wanted to see job production and all of the other applicants were able to prove right away that day one, we're going to support these 10 youth and getting a summer job through building trails. And, and so they said, we just didn't have a a tangible thing to say, this is what we're bringing to the table. And I asked their, the state's professional opinion, do you think there's any other state grants that would support this type of master plan? They said, not, not necessarily. It's hard when you're doing recreation or outdoor things to support a master plan. You'll notice that there's other grants that we have received that it's like specifically for housing master plans. There's nothing as it relates to that. So when we're going up against other communities that are showing, here's where we're going to have a ribbon cutting and ours is a master plan. They just, the funding committees don't want to fund it. So I think we do have $80,000 budgeted in 2023. And so I think we'll need a little bit of direction. You don't have to make a decision tonight, but I'd like you all to think about, should we try to keep looking for grant funding or at this point, do we want to just take on that project in-house and do the master plan with our dollars and then try to find the funding to, to fund a future trail build out or whatever the master plan might be. So that's something that the board will want to discuss. Are there any questions?
Trustee Mason. Trustee Gator.
The only question I had is it's great that we've gotten the C dot grants, which has been great, but I know a lot of the challenges that we have revolve around our roads and drainage, things like that. And really don't see much outside of those few which we got, which is great. Is there just not opportunity for other grants within that area? Cause I see a lot of in other areas, but I'm not seeing a bunch of them. A bunch of new ones are pending that are in the streets and water sewer drainage.
So for water sewage drainage and
in those categories, I see a lot of other things on there which are good, but I mean, the, the trails and everything that's, those are things that we need to work on, but like the urgent things are what's going on in our water fund, what's going on in our sewer fund? Cause those directly drive rates. And then also the streets, because again, we continue to hear about the state of streets and we're trying to find funding for projects. So I'm just wondering if there's just not grants out there that we could be pursuing in those areas, or if we've just gotten all the ones that are possible already.
Well, we, the answer is, of course, we're always looking for grants that fund what we currently have in this year's budget and, and potential the five year CIP as well. So we're always looking for opportunities. And as I mentioned at the beginning, it's important that we need, that's a very large undertaking, the Cleveland Avenue project. And so we've got to be a good stewards of those grant dollars to prove that we are eligible for other grant projects through C dot. So with all the co-mingling of funds that you see for that Cleveland Avenue one, it's, it's very important that we do get that one completed before. It's hard to keep dipping into the well when they say, well, you haven't finished this one yet. So, and we don't, our team's not that large either. So it's hard to say we can delegate off another thing to that. But of course we're looking for grants in every avenue. As mentioned, there's a very long list of lots of other things, but for simplicity, just, you know, and funding changes very, very quickly too. Thank you. So you said the main restrictions, when you're looking at funding for the Parks and Trail Master Plan would be having that employability. You specifically called out youth. Is there anything that we can do as far as pairing with the local middle school, high school? As far as offering internships or part-time jobs through the parks or anything like that, that can make us look more attractive for next year's application? So this, that particular grant that I was referencing that we didn't receive, that was through the Office of Economic Development, International Trade. And, and that was the last round of funding so that it had the highest volume. And that particular grant wanted to see job production within that. So we've also submitted it through Colorado Outdoors. GoCo is another grant. We submitted that twice for the Parks Master Plan and that had a different set of criteria. But they also said the same exact thing is it's difficult to fund something that's not actually like tangible. So that particular grant that I mentioned, that we just didn't get, that was about the jobs one. So that we've applied for it three different times through, through different entities. What makes it not tangible? That it's not like you're like a playground. It's, it's, I mean, of course it's a, it's a master plan, but it's, it's a planning for the future. So their concern is we give you money to have a planning document, but there's no guarantee that you can fulfill everything within that planning document. Because funders like to have ribbon cuttings, to be honest, and they want something that you can show that we did this trail. We did this playground for the community. And so that's what, that's what I mean by it's not tangible. So
Got it. Perfect. That's it.
Trustee again.
No questions. I think you explained it pretty well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice work, Kelly. I know a lot of work goes into researching all of this information and vetting the different grants as well as the grant administration that happens post acceptance. I think that you highlighted a really important part. I mean, 10 years ago, we were talking about how we needed additional rooftops to be able to bolster economic development in the community. And one of the ways that we did that was to try and improve the community through quality of life, through like parks and trails and master planning. So I completely understand where they're coming from about wanting to see those ribbon cuttings because they bring sales tax revenue. So it definitely, you know, begs the question, you know, where should we be investing our time? Is it more towards the recruitment and retention of economic development and steering away from some of those, I guess, maybe quality of life aspects or, you know, which, which one comes first? So those are all very great talking points and really good information. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, you're a rock star. So thank you for all that you do in pursuing these things and trying to get us what we can to get projects done in town. I really appreciate the presentation. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I did have one question for you, Kelly. I just wanted to understand as far as the Parks Master Plans, is, are those three that are in here just ones that we've applied for this year?
For the, just the Parks Master Plan? They weren't all this year, some were last year that we applied for through GoCo.
Okay. Yeah. I was just trying to understand the timeline for these things. Cause if we've only seen, you know, three of these that we've been able to apply for over the course of two years or so.
Yeah.
I just, I'd be a little worried that other opportunities are going to pop up as you've expressed. So I, my personal opinion, I would not be opposed to looking towards, certainly we've already got some of that money budgeted there. So you know, if, if that was a project, we would have to take in, into house. I don't think I'd be opposed to that.
Thank you.
All right. I'm still here for the next one.
Yes. Now we're on the website redesign and accessibility.
Thank you. Again, Kelly Hodling, Deputy Town Administrator, discussing the website accessibility law and website redesign. So House Bill 21-1110 expands the Colorado Anti-Discrimination Act with new language that specifically calls out accessibility of government resources through online technology. And so the governor's office put together his team of the Office of Information and Technology, and they have adopted minimum standards that they call the Web Content Accessibility Guidelines. And so it's our duty as local governments by July 1st of 2024, that we must be in compliance of web accessibility law. And we also have to have a, an action plan as well. So I included in the packet tonight, our plan that has lots of references. This is mainly a tool for staff. So it's a kind of an internal document and it will be a training document. So it has an, an overview and expectations of staff of how we will continue to implement these guidelines, the action plan and our ongoing commitment to make changes to increase accessibility for local government, which also aligns with the Board of Trustees Strategic Plan of ongoing transparency and accessibility to local government. So it pairs nicely. And then the second part of that is we do need to do a website update to be able to get into compliance. So Mahala has kicked off that with Civic Plus. That is our website host and provider. And part of that redesign is ensuring that we comply with state guidelines and that we're in alignment of that. Including we'll do additional training with our staff as well. And then we also have this, a tool that's on our website called Moncedo, which is it monitors our website. If there's anything that falls out of compliance, like broken links, missing photo captions, and there's other issues that might happen with that. And so it's, it's real time that we can go in and determine that we need to, to get something fixed right away. And so that's something that we also have that helps us get into compliance, but we do have to do audits on our website to, to ensure these things get into compliance. So Mahala's working incredibly hard getting, getting that going, making sure she's very familiar with accessibility law. And then she'll be working to improve a user experience on the websites for all our visitors, whether you visit on desktop or mobile app. And the goal is to launch hopefully around the end of October of this year. Any questions?
I don't have any questions. Great job, Kelly. And yeah, I mean, the website certainly has gone through a whole host of iterations over the last number of years. I think it, it, you know, it's, it's always going to be a work in progress, but yeah, you, you guys are doing a great job. I, you know, I have to use it all the time and I'm generally able to find what I need. So, but keep up the work in that regard. So.
I think that's fantastic. And thank you guys so much for your efforts. Something I am curious about at the end of this process after October is if we could maybe consolidate what the cost was total associated with this project. Given it was, you know, initiative that we received or required to do from the state. And, cause the concern is, you know, if, if that requirement comes out and it's costing us a significant amount of money, you know, my hope is that those kinds of improvements could be self-funded through the state when their requirements for us to employ. So that's my only concern, of course, completely separate of you guys and I'm so happy with the work that you guys are doing and thank you.
Trustee again. No questions.
No questions.
No questions.
You don't have another one, do you?
Thanks.
All right. Next is going to be the consent agenda consists of the May 9th, 2023 Board of Meeting or Board of Trustees Regular Meeting Minutes and cancellation of the June 27th, 2023 Board of Trustees Regular Meeting. They get a motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
May I get a roll call, please? Certainly. Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Mayor Putnam McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. So now we will move on or we will close the regular meeting and open the liquor licensing authority board. Time being 6:56 PM. Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Certainly. Trustee Gator.
Here.
Trustee Daly.
Present.
Trustee Mason.
Here.
Trustee Teets.
Here.
Trustee Wigan.
Here.
Mayor Putnam McDonald.
Here.
Mayor Shosse.
Here.
Thank you.
Uh, there's going to be three items on the agenda for the liquor license authority board for this evening. Mr. Ethan Moose, the town clerk will present these items in sequence per the established agenda. Mr. Moose.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Board of Trustees. I'm Ethan Moose, the town clerk. I'll be presenting three items for your consideration of the liquor, liquor license authority board. The first of which being a renewal application from Mini Mart Inc. Doing Business as the Loaf and Jug Number 50, correction, 750846, currently located at 8211 Sixth Street in Wellington. They've submitted an application for renewal. With the current expiration date of June, the 24th, we received all applicable fees. And do find that their application, after conducting a review of the application and inspection is in compliance with applicable municipal and state code. I'm happy to take any questions that you have about this application.
Any questions from the board? No. All right. Are there any comments from the public on this agenda? May I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the license renewal for Mini Mart Doing Business as Loaf and Jug.
I'll second.
May I get a roll call, please?
Certainly. Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Mayor Putnam McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you. The next item for your consideration this evening is a special event permit that's been submitted by the Wellington, Colorado Main Streets Program. Representing this item is Caitlin Morse from town staff is the submitter of it. We've received all applicable documentation pursuant to her application. And after consideration of the items, we find that it is in compliance indeed with municipal and Colorado Liquor Code. Notice for permit consideration has been posted in the designated location for 10 days prior to your consideration of this item, and we have received no remonstrance petitions from any members of the town. Happy to take any questions for you on this item.
Trustee Mason.
I've already got my tickets. Hope to see everybody there.
Trustee Daly.
Same.
Trustee Gator.
I did have a couple of questions with the event with the, I see the fencing and things like that. And is that monitored that only people that are ticketed are able to come in? Or is it just anyone can go in? Or how's that functioning?
My understanding of that, Trustee Gator, is that there will be control measures at the entry point, which I believe is indicated on the entry and exit point, which is indicated on the diagram there for you. Only people that are ticketed will be allowed to enter and the staff will verify that not town staff, Wellington, Colorado, Main Streets Program staff will verify that each entrant is at least 21 years or older.
Perfect. And then is there also going to be controlled by the bathroom area? Cause it doesn't look like their fence includes the bathroom area. Marked as an entry exit, but the fence.
Absolutely.
Awesome.
I'm Annie Thomas and on the breakfast committee, we've been, I don't know, maybe this is our fourth, fifth year? Yeah. So we do have that opening to use the restrooms, of course, but we're partnering with not just Main Streets, but also hiring outside security for that, so that there will be no alcohol, that you can't walk out with it. They'll make you keep it inside the fenced area before you use the restroom.
Perfect. And they'll be monitoring people coming in that.
Yeah, you can't go out. I mean, you can't go out without, without call in the, outside the fence at all.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, you guys?
That was all I had.
I'm just extremely grateful to see all of the high labeled ADA access on this map. I know for many years previous, there wasn't a lot of labeling of ADA access. So I am extremely grateful to see it for those who have disabilities. It very clearly labels that everyone is welcome to participate and I'm grateful for that. Thank you.
It looks like every year the quality of the organization's just getting better. And I think you're using tips, I think, as far as monitoring everybody. So, and they know what they're doing. So I think we've got some great people in store there. So, thank you.
Mayor Putnam.
No questions.
No questions. Any comments from the public on this agenda? May I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the special event permit for breakfast.
A second.
Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Certainly. Mayor Shosse. Mayor Putnam McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you. The final item for the liquor license authority board for this evening is a renewal application from John, Donjon LLC, which is doing business as Wellington Grill, currently located at 3724 Cleveland Avenue. We've received all applicable fees for the renewal application and their license expiry date is the 4th of June, 2023. After conducting a review of their application and inspection of the premise, we find they are indeed in compliance with applicable municipal and state code. I'm happy to take any questions from the board on this issue.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the board?
The only question I had was on the inspection report. I'm assuming it was just a mistake. There was one that was a check mark in the note, but then it was crossed out. I'm assuming it was just an error.
I believe when Corporal Baker conducted inspection, he made an erroneous mark and then corrected it.
Got it. Okay. I just wanted to double check on that. And then I don't know if we understand it said, said displayed expired liquor licenses. Did they just have an old one and the new one? Or I don't.
So they had been they'd been presented their old license, but had not posted it publicly.
Got it.
We've we've provided them a digital and physical copies of their licenses.
Thank you.
All right. Any comments from the public on this agenda?
No.
May I get a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve Don John LLC DBA Wellington Grill License Renewal.
A second.
Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Certainly, Mayor Chelsea. Mayor Portman McDonald.
Yes.
Trusty Wigan.
Yes.
Trusty Mason.
Yes.
Trusty Daly.
Yes.
Trusty Teets.
Yes.
Trusty Gator.
Yes.
Mayor Chelsea.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now close the Liquor License Authority Board and reopen the regular meeting time being seven oh three P M. Final item on the agenda this evening will be reports. Mr. Sapienza.
Project, I think it was May eighth or May ninth was the end of the Colorado Legislative Session. And of course, every year, there's a lot of legislation that comes down that affects municipalities. CML is doing a number of really good reports that will make sure you are in your hands when we have them of past bills that affect the town. Couple of interesting ones that from a recent webinar related to Kelly's presentation on website accessibility. One of the important reasons that she's doing that work is there's a statutory fine associated with violations. That statutory fine is thirty-five hundred dollars per violation. This new law actually, though, says it's just one violation per visit. So basically, somebody can't go in and say, well, this page has this link wrong, and the next page has this link wrong. It reduced that. So the state did a good job there, making sure that we're at least have a bit of protection. But it's still thirty-five hundred dollars per violation is a pretty serious issue. So it's good that we're getting that taken care of. There's some good bill that came out on court data sharing that I'm very excited with. It's a task force on municipal and county and district court data sharing. You know, being a small municipal court, we sometimes have not a lot of resources or knowledge about what's going on out there. So that'll be exciting to maybe bring some new information to the town's municipal court. There's some good bills that I've sent to Ethan. I've said, you need to study these seventy-five page bills on campaign finance and municipal elections. So big changes coming all around, but there will be a lot of more information coming out. And like I said, when we have that available, make sure it's in your hands.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia.
So I was on the same webinar as.
It's a good webinar.
It was a good webinar, and there will be an update at the CML Conference. So they will be providing all of that information to you at that at the conference as well. I have no other update. Thank you.
Thank you. Any staff communications? Perfect. The monthly utility report is included in the packet for the board's reference. You guys need to look at it. Next will be, are there any questions for the Board of Trustees for the on April, March, or April report from the Orange County Sheriff's Office? Questions? Questions? Trusty Gator.
Let me get to it. I did see that we continue to have kind of the, sorry, I'm looking at March. I'm sorry, I was looking for March, not April one. I saw that the sex offenses numbers were up again, as well as the vehicle theft or vehicle trespass. Is that in March, maybe? Are we can, is this something we're seeing continued rise in things? Or is this just continuance of what we've been seeing?
First of all, good evening. Good evening. So you were looking at March and you were looking at, so let me, sorry. I realized I was looking at March and then I scrolled down to April, but sex offenses were up in both months. Again, vehicle thefts was high in March. I feel like you already talked to us about that, though. So that's why I was like, hold on a second.
Vehicle thefts in the months of March, I had three, which is a little abnormal. One was actually a duplicate call. So it was, the call was just duplicated. We didn't have two, two vehicles stolen. We did have a stolen Jeep. It was recovered down in Westminster. And the suspect was arrested for driving under the influence, of course, being possession of a stolen vehicle. I'm not seeing anything that's that's jumping out at me as far as any of the statistics that say that we have a major motor vehicle theft ring coming into into Wellington. I don't think that that was reflected in April's statistics either for vehicle thefts. Some of the sex offenses, just keep in mind that sometimes things get pulled into one category. For instance, we've had a number of juvenile cases where teenagers sharing nude photographs of themselves. And then somebody takes those photos and then they threaten to publish them on the internet. Will those get lumped into being a sex offense? I'm not seeing anything that says that we have, certainly don't have a serial rapist on the on the loose or anything along those lines. Some of these are, most of these, I'd say, are juveniles to juveniles. It's not adults to juveniles or anything along those lines, but nothing that has given me any immediate concern. Any any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant Cherry. Are there any board reports from the trustees? Start with Trusty Gator.
Yes, so had a good meeting with the Hispanic community yesterday. So Patty, myself, and the mayor were able to meet with the same people that met with us. So Betty, who you all met, who came to present to the board, and then Adriano was there, and then several members of the community. It was great to be able to give them an update on where we're at with the transportation, letting them know that that's something that because of just that what they started and asking us to look into this as a town that we're actually looking into that. And that was the biggest takeaway for me was it's they're very grateful that we're actually taking the step to try and listen to them, to say, to come and ask, what do you need and seeing what we can do? And a big thing that came out was, okay, what are the other issues or concerns that you have? There's obviously a discussion about water came up. Transportation continues to be a huge thing. A lot of discussion was also had about services, access to services as well as recreation. So I actually put Betty in touch with Trusty Daly because I know she's been working really hard on the recreation side. And so she can connect directly with her and work through that and kind of bring their input into those conversations. But I'm just very grateful to the mayor and Patty for being there for that meeting. So I was good on that standpoint, and I think that's the only thing I had on my report.
Thank you. Trusty Teets.
I have no reports.
Trusty Wigan.
I have no reports, but I got a question. I was approached by somebody that's associated with one of the marijuana businesses coming into town, offered me to go golfing, probably very innocent, but what's the protocol? Absolutely nothing, right? That's kind of what I did.
Let's talk about that offline if you.
I was just kind of curious. I think we need to have that out there that we are being approached.
Okay, well, please give me a call. We'll talk tomorrow.
River ten. Trusty.
This is kind of last call for the Chamber of Commerce Golf Tournament. I won't be here this weekend, so I don't. Is it? Pretty sure it's this.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
It is this weekend. So if you're interested.
Twenty-eight, right?
Potentially. Yeah, I feel like I was going to be in Montana. Okay, I'm going to get dates just to be super sure. But if anybody's interested, I know we were looking from a staff perspective, too, if anybody wanted to play. So if there is anybody who's highly interested or wants to see if they can get placed on the team, let me know and we'll hook you up with the right people. Actually, I think I was just correct. Oh, it's in June, June twenty-fourth.
Oh, June twenty-fourth.
They're finalizing the teams. That's what I'm getting on. And it was like the last weekend of the month. Okay, so we still have time to get it together. I'm sorry. Obviously, I need to get it together over here. So other items are this weekend, the Saturday is Town Cleanup Day. So if anybody wants to participate in that, not town cleanup, but garage sales, yard sales. So go on the website if you want to be involved in that. Also Brew Fest is on June third, right? So the, which we talked about a little bit earlier for Main Streets and supporting a bunch of organizations within the community. A couple of other events that I do want to remind people about is tomorrow evening is the Boys and Girls Club Summer Orientation. So if anybody has kids who are planning going to summer program, this would be a great time to understand how that's going to work and what kind of support is available. And then I talked about it before, but the first week of June, we're going to be talking about the health base, school-based health system. And there's an open house that will be at the Boys and Girls Club, and that is June sixth from five thirty to seven. The majority of that will be reviewing the surveys that was given to students, staff, and parents on their current healthcare situations, what they find or need more support in, or whether or not they're even in support of having something like a school-based health system. So I've attended this, and it's very informative, kind of alarming. Go there with tissues potentially. So but please attend if you're interested in learning more. And if this is to move forward, they have a timeline available to an amazing facility at the Wellington Middle High School. So if you want to know more, please do that. And this will serve every Pooter School District, potentially serve every Pooter School District kiddo, regardless of what school they go to, even if they're in early childhood, all the way up to twenty-one. So please learn more if you're interested. But that's all I have. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Patty, can you clarify garage sale days for me? Just just to be sure, because I think I was bumming because I was thinking I was missing garage sale days this year because it's not until the third, the same day as Brew Fest, correct?
I'm checking.
Okay.
Yeah, I have it on the the town calendar. Yeah, June third. I think I said this weekend and then said June third. I'm very confused about what day it is right now. Sorry. Usually on my computer instead of trying to work from my phone. So, okay, thanks.
Trusty Gator. One other thing that I forgot is I stopped by yesterday and chatted with Sergeant Cherry. They, I don't know if they're fully moved yet, but LCSO is moving from the old annex into the Old Town Hall Building. So if you're used to looking for the sheriff's department where they used to be, they will now be where the Old Town Hall was. I got to go see that and then did also just want to shout out Cody Bird has been putting in a ton of work, it sounds like, over there. Sergeant Cherry was just talking about the amazing work that he was doing and the staff. So thank you to staff for helping LCSO get moved in and excited to make use of the building so it's not sitting empty. So.
We will do a formal ribbon cutting probably in June so we can celebrate the the move and the change.
Very cool. Very cool. Do we own the older building that they're in?
Go for it, then I'll go.
This is the last week of school for Pooter School District. So Friday will be half day, and then we'll have a bunch of kids loose on the town. So if I could just do a public service announcement of watch for them, don't run them over. You know, be extra eyes and ears and just take care of our kids, keep them busy. Lots of things like that. So but just please be cautious, although it'll be a lot more kids loose and and around. So traffic safety always concerns me. So just be careful. Thanks.
They're having a huge party at the River of Life for Schools Out Day. So everybody was invited and there's inflatables and all kinds of stuff over there on Friday.
Perfect. No, you're good. You don't even apologize for anything. I I did meet with the owners of Trailhead Activity Center. They'd be interested in maybe doing some collaboration with the town or something of that sort. They have activities for kids. They have summer camps, things of that nature. So a lot of people don't know that we have, you know, the Boys and Girls Club, we have them. There's there's opportunities in town that are current that can be taken advantage of. I know that they do dance, art, music, taekwondo, and some other things. Got them in touch with Betty as well to help with that community, see if we can get stuff going there. But yeah, just be aware that we have stuff for the kids to do since school is going to be out. So, yeah, that's all I had. Having no further business, may I get a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Certainly. Trusty Teets.
Yeah.
Trusty Gator.
Yes.
Trusty Daly.
Yes.
Trusty Mason.
Yes.
Trusty Wigan.
Yes.
Mayor Portman McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Chelsea.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, no, no, you're fine. No, that's fine. No. Perfect. As long as, I mean.